Okay, let's start the planning commission meeting at 6:03 PM. And let's begin with welcomes and introductions. We've had a couple of planning commissioners leave very recently, the former chair Felicity Ratte, and who served us well as chair for a couple of years with a lot of enthusiasm and initiative and thoughtfulness. So we're sad to see her go. And Jessica Geltzer went on to be a select board member. And we have a couple of new members. What should we do? Just pass it around and everyone can introduce ourselves to each other. So you guys can tell a little bit about yourselves and you can learn about us, too.
All right, I'll begin. Gary Stroud. This is to rep, I was originally a planning commissioner rep way back with Sue. Oh, my God, so I don't know what year that was, 2014.
I remember what year. I should have looked it up, but.
Yeah, that's when they were doing the new police building, fire building. And they were also doing, I think we were doing Skateboard Park, too. Trying to figure out where they were going to go. So we did quite a bit of that, and that was very interesting, educational, enjoyable. And it was very productive, what we did in learning a lot about how the system works in the town and what we do and how we operate. And that's why I was glad to come back again to do it. And looking forward to doing some more things now. The town is up and coming and growing. A lot of new businesses and people and things going on and a lot of things trickling down. So looking for a good year for us to box after with this. We won't be zooming. We'll meet in person at some time. And I finally get to meet Tom and Sue. We'll sit down at the round table and brainstorm some good things. And Dan, I see Dan all the time. And it's great to meet Aiden Doran. I haven't seen him. How you doing, Mr. Day? How's it going? And Kevin, welcome, too. And I'll pass the ball down to Kate.
Thank you, Gary.
So, all right, I'm, I've got, I've got a three-year-old. So she's in the background, so I'll be trying to keep myself muted. But Kate Berry, I'm a, I'm a Realtor. I've lived in Brattleboro since 2010. I moved here to go to SIT. I got my master's in sustainable development, got into real estate. So I'm really passionate about local community development, especially working with first-time homebuyers and first-time, you know, homeowners in terms of, you know, familial ways like that. And I'm really excited to be a part of the planning board. I've never done anything like this before. I'm excited to be of service. I'd love to, you know, donate as much of my time. And if I can provide any sort of, you know, advice or insight into the housing market, I'd be happy to do that.
Great. You're coming at the right time for, to line up with some of our efforts. How about Dan?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. My name is Dan Handy. Just a brief history. I've lived here since, well, I've lived in the area since 1999. Bought my first house in Brattleboro in 2003 as a first-time homebuyer, by the way. So it's very interesting. And I've been a landlord since about 2009. Or rental property owner, otherwise known as. And I'm now the landlord liaison person at Groundworks Collaborative, connecting with tenants and landlords. And, well, I have, I have a background in academically and planning-related topics. I'll just leave it at that. So I'm very interested in all the wide range of issues that we're dealing with.
Yeah, and I should say, I think both you and Gary are on the DRB right now, right? So there's a lot of crossover. That'll be interesting to see what comes of that.
Yeah, I'm, I think we're both alternates. Is that right, Gary?
Well, yeah, we're all two. So we alternate, me and you. One day he goes.
We alternate, alternating.
That's not the way it works on the planning commission. Both of you have to show up.
That, that's right. We have to be here with coffee.
All right, hey, Doran, want to say a little?
Sure. Hi, everybody. My name is Doran Ham. You can also call me Dory. I am Dumerson, born and raised. I went away and studied theater and arts management. And I'm a theater teacher and a longtime children's theater performer. And then with COVID, all my, my six days a week jobs went away. So then I thought I put my energy towards community building and community planning. Was one of the founding members of the tenants, the Brattle Tenants Union. And then I really wanted to get more involved with, with local politics. So I joined the planning commission and was just a District Three rep. So it's really great to be here from a low-income renter perspective. And so I kind of always had that hat on, but just really excited to see what we can do to make sure Brattleboro is just as accessible as it can be to the people that really want to make it home. So, yeah.
Yep, great. I'll just finish out with the commissioners by saying that Prudence McKenney, I don't know how many of you know her, I mean, of the new people, Kate and Gary. But, um, yes, she's, she's absent for this meeting. Maybe she'll show up. She's been on for about a year, I think. So I've been a commissioner for two, almost two and a half years. I've been in town for three or three and a half and bought a house here downtown a couple of years ago with needing a lot of work and I've been fixing it up and renting a couple bedrooms. So I'm kind of a small-time landlord as well. And, yeah, just, I'm a town meeting rep as well and a Wyndham Regional Commissioner. So trying to get involved and learn about the issues and have a say and hopefully improve things. So should we go with Sue next and then Kevin and then our guest Wendy?
Sure. That sounds good. Hi, everybody. I'm Sue Fillion. I'm the planning director. I've been, it's coming on two years as the planning director. Prior to that, I worked for nine years as the town planner. So I've been with Brattleboro for, it'll be 11 years in September, I think, 12 years? I don't know. The numbers are all off. But I, yeah, I love working for the town of Brattleboro. I'm really excited to have you all on the planning commission. And I think we've got a lot of interesting and varied projects coming up. And you all talked about housing and we'll talk a little bit about that tonight because one of our major projects is in the housing realm. So, Kevin.
Yeah, I'm Kevin O'Brien. I'm an AmeriCorps member. So my stint will be 11 months and I started in September. So this August will be my, my term. And working, serving, I want to use the appropriate terminology, serving with the town of Brattleboro and the sustainability coordinator. So helping out there and then along with the planning department. So I'm excited for this meeting to kind of learn a little bit more about the onboarding process and try and really get more people engaged civically in town is one of my big things. Come to Wendy.
Oh, I'm mic'd off.
Yeah, so we can, guests can comment at any time, you know, that seems appropriate. Just raise your hand or turn your camera on. And if you want to talk about an agenda item, then you can, you know, raise your hand or flag us down at the right time or at the very end, there will be a public comment period. But there you are. You want to say something?
There I am. Some people may know me from town. We bought a house here in 2005. After a couple of years of living in Dumerson, I've been a preschool teacher around town for a long time. So sometimes people say, oh, she looks familiar. And I was a co-op cashier while being a preschool teacher. And I have three kids of my own who went through, we moved here when they were three, five, and 13. So they went through some versions of Brattleboro schools. It's nice to see who's, who's on this committee. I'm interested in the planning process in general, and I have a specific interest that I don't think is on your agenda tonight, but I figured it would be who needs to learn a little more about planning. The water department apparently wants to build a pretty large new pump station right next house, next to our driveway, next to our garden. And I'm kind of interested in how those decisions unfold and what, what information people get at what stage. I mean, it's okay with you. I'll just shut my camera off again since I'm not on the committee.
Yeah, either way.
I'll be listening.
Okay.
I'll be listening. So I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has some. Okay, thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate being, joining you.
Great. Thank you, Wendy. You made a note of that, Sue, right? You look into that? You're muted.
Sorry about that. Do you want me to address that now? Because I don't, if Wendy doesn't want to stay on the call, we can address that. But I also said we have a caller on the line.
Hi, that's Prudence. I'm having internet problems, so I'm on phone here.
Okay. Hey, Prudence.
Hi, Prudence.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, so we've got a couple of new commissioners, Kate Berry and Gary Stroud. I don't know if you want to, maybe if you don't know them already, you can say a little bit about yourself and they'll put the face to the name later.
Okay, sounds good. And I might, I might get on full Zoom here later. So I'm Prudence McKenney. I've been on the commission a year and a half. And I have lived and worked in Brattleboro for a lot of years. I worked at BMH for most of my career. And then I was at the Department of Health in public health and got real involved in healthy community design work. And that's kind of what my passion is, is working to try to improve Brattleboro's bike and, and, and walking infrastructure. But I'm interested in the town in general and the other work of the planning commission. Looking forward to, to meeting you guys.
Thank you, Bruce.
So Stephen Ducksen, the sustainability coordinator, just joined up. I don't know if he wants to say a little intro for the, for people here or a little bit about himself?
Hi, everybody. I can be quick. Good to be with you all tonight. I am the sustainability coordinator and I support a lot of different committees across the town. A lot of my concern has to do with natural resource management, land use as it relates to climate change and maintaining the quality of life for everyone in town. So we have some ongoing projects with the planning commission specific to solar siting and where we do or do not want or how we kind of assess the appropriateness of different parcels for preferential solar treatment. Gary, as well as on the ag committee, which I've been working with, I staff the energy committee. And then I work with a number of community groups across the board. So that's kind of my role and I pop in here to support. And I'm a key part of that solar siting working group.
Thank you, Steve.
If there's nothing else to do with intros and welcomes, Sue, maybe you can move us to the announcements section by answering Wendy's question first?
Sure, I can do that. So Wendy, you were asking about a pump station that's going to be built. I'm assuming it's the Guilford Road. On Guilford Road, yes, okay. So that upgrade, that's not something that has come before the planning commission or would come before the planning commission. The Public Works Department is, they definitely are the ones who have identified the need and they work with the engineers. It will go before the Development Review Board. So one of the things that I should have said in my introduction is the planning department staffs a couple of different boards and committees. So as Stephen mentioned, the agricultural advisory committee, the conservation commission, and the energy committee. But then there's like the two kind of land use regulatory boards. So there's the planning commission who's responsible for writing the land use regulations and kind of the legislative process. They write it, they send it to the select board and they get to, you know, they decide if they're going to be adopted. And then there's the Development Review Board, which is a board of seven members and a couple of alternates. Gary and Dan are both alternates to that board. They review the site plan for that. So we haven't received that submission yet. But when the time comes, they would be that board, who is independent of the town, but does receive some support from our department in terms of, does it meet the regulations? We'll provide some guidance towards that. So they would have the ultimate say. You're muted, Wendy.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. So one, one of my concerns after talking with the wetland, the scientist who was sent out to, to look at the wetlands, because it is a wetland area and it's a wetland area. And there was, a couple of years ago, there was a zoning change for a house to be built that really altered the flow of water. So I'm a little bit concerned that plans will move ahead. There'll be a, be a large investment of time and money in planning it. And by the time it gets to the Developmental Review Board, it will be kind of a done thing already. Yes, we're putting this, they said the planning is something like 20 by 20-foot building, buried propane tanks, a generator, a driveway for deliveries of fuel. And it's in a very small space. If any of you know Guilford Street, it's just before Hillcrest on the way up towards Montessori. So it basically will be larger than some garages, just a two-car garage right at the edge of our land. And so my, my concern is waiting until, oh, here's a plan. And then have someone say, the town's already spent, who knows, 30,000, 50,000, developing the plan, hiring the architect, you know, then, then I'm afraid the review board will be basically, well, do you want a whiteboard fence or a picket fence? Do you want rhododendrons or, or pine tree shielding it off? There are some mature trees on the site now. But so there are those various issues. There's wetlands. There's the greening up. There's the proximity to the house. And the size of it, to me, it seems like it's a large thing, a large building and accoutrements to put on a small site.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess that's kind of a question I have, too, related to that. It's like, you know, if the planning, if the land use regs say what and where and what size and shape can, you know, as far as land development can be around, does, you know, public works projects kind of have a, what's the phrase? Like not have to follow that? Or, because I don't think we have any public works, you know, categories in our land use regs, do we?
We have, you know, I don't have it right in front of me. I can grab it. It's probably going to take a little bit of time. We do have some, there are, you know, utility structures and things like that that would fall under public works. And, you know, we certainly, they need to follow the regulations. If it's a wetland, it's going to have to meet the buffers. What I would say about the DRB is historically, they treat the town the same as other, any other applicant. So I don't think that you'd find there was any kind of preferential treatment.
I know. We went over and looked at a pump house on Carriage Hill Road and that was very carefully sited. So it has a thick stand of trees on either side of it and behind it from neighbors. One side is a community garden. And it's on a gentle slope so that the people who are closest to it don't see the building. They see trees and then a rooftop. And I did ask Brian Bannon some time ago about, since that was clearly carefully integrated into the neighborhood, why not try to do something like that? And he said, well, that was built when the neighborhood was built and now we're kind of moving on. But there is other, there are other empty sites in this area that would certainly not be as obtrusive. They would be slightly larger, so.
What I, I'd like to suggest.
I'm happy to take your suggestions for.
No, I mean, I guess what I would like to suggest is, I'm wondering, I don't know enough about the details of the project. I'd like to find that out and I'd be happy to have a conversation with you to get in touch and, you know, understand the needs as public work sees them and what their engineers have said, because I, the size and whatnot, I can't really speak to any of that. But I am happy to get in touch and speak with you about that.
So maybe I'll, I'll send you my email and we can communicate when it's not using meeting time.
No, it's great. I appreciate you bringing this to the planning commission's attention because certainly as this project moves forward, you know, they, they have every right to send a letter and do that kind of thing as well.
And I didn't know if it's the town's equivalent of eminent domain, that if it is, the Public Works Department, you know, they just say, here's what we need. Here's what we're, we're getting.
It's not.
Or removing.
Yeah, and I believe it's on a piece of town-owned land. And it, you know, we don't, the town does not have certain rights to development under state law, so.
They did purchase the land fairly recently. Okay. So we gave the, when we first moved here, we gave them the tiny piece that the pump house was on, the current pump house, which is about the size of a doghouse. We had it surveyed and hired attorneys and gave it to the town. You can see it in our deed. But then they, a few months ago, they bought the piece next to it and are moving forward with what seems like incredible speed at the time of COVID and tight budgets and environmental awareness and things like that. So, all right, so I'll get in touch with you. I appreciate everyone's time, anyone who has any thoughts about it. Sue will have my email and I'd be happy to present anything more or give you the homeowner's site visit at some point, if you so desire. Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I suppose as planning commissioners, we could, down the line, re, you know, take another look at and reevaluate where we permit, which zones we permit utility structures to be in. But it sounds like it's already moved beyond, you know, it's already started. So I think like what Sue said, it's all, it's in the DRB's court now. But, so thanks, thanks for bringing up.
I don't know if that means it's definitely a done deal as it is or, you know.
I see Sue shaking her head no. So, so get in touch with her. And, you know, she'll see what we can do.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the announcements section. So I know Sue has a few.
Yeah, just two. And Tom had provided the other one, so, or the first one, which is that Felicity Ratte, who was our previous chair, resigned after the March meeting. There's some work in family commitments. We're really sad to see her go, which gets to an agenda item a little bit later on. We need a new chair and Tom is kind of, as current vice chair, has been leading this meeting. And, yep, we'll have a chance for an appointment for an interim chair. And the other announcement is that Andrew Graminsky, who some of you know, who was our planning technician and attended these meetings, he has taken a job with the city of Somerville in Massachusetts. So Andrew is no longer with the town. We do have a job ad out there for a planning technician. And I think applications are due Thursday. So if anybody, I can, I think I may have sent it out to you to distribute to anybody.
Yeah, he did.
So, yeah, so those are my two announcements at this time. I think the rest I'll cover under what we talk about in the agenda.
Yeah, I think so. Status of current projects and things like that.
Yeah.
Okay. If there are any other announcements, I can't tell if Prudence's hand is up or not, because she can't.
It's not.
Okay, great. We'll definitely hear from you with that last agenda item. If not before then, let's move on to approving the March 3rd minutes or March 1st minutes. Is there a motion? Well, I don't know if Gary can, but maybe that's a question.
Well, no, I was about to ask you that, Tom, just, we just got on board, I would think.
Yeah. It's hard for me to keep a lot of these rules straight because I've never been the chair before, but I'm going to try to really make a study of it in these next few meetings.
I've got a lot of time.
I can make a motion, I believe, to approve the minutes of March 1st.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Doran, okay, any corrections or discussion? I remember, Sue, that it had been our practice to, well, everyone, not just Sue, but Sue and, you know, staff is the one writing the minutes. But to put people's names as just anonymous as commissioner in most cases, you know, like when they comment on something or have a perspective, it just says a commissioner. But then, but then when there's a vote, the person was named, you know, the distinguishing person, the opposing person. I don't know, I don't know if that was an oversight or if that has to be that way. Or I'm not even sure how much I am on board with the practice of anonymizing the commissioners. But, I mean, I'm not against it either. I just, I just don't remember the initial conversation that we had.
I do remember that conversation that it kind of wanted to be a little bit more anonymous. I think I can go either way on that. In terms of somebody voting in opposition, I felt, I'm not sure what the correct way to do that is, to be honest. I felt like Felicity was pretty strongly opposed and maybe would want that documented. Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, no. It was more a question of curiosity. I saw Gary's hand up first.
Basically, like something like this, when it comes to voting, since like when Dan and I, like, they'll call me for like alternate. I would have to abstain because if I wasn't at that meeting, well, I might have gotten the information, but you would have a quorum in, in any case, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. Yeah, so I would suggest that Gary and Kate don't vote because they weren't commissioners at this time. So, yeah, I think abstentions would be appropriate.
Okay. And Doran?
Yeah, I would listen because I don't know if I was even here yet at that point in that discussion. Just a reminder of, at least Prudence's or people who were opposed a little bit, why? Because I'm not too sure if I, if I have a sort of a reason, one way or another, for that to be, yeah, to, to, yeah, move forward one way or another.
So is this about whether commissioners' comments are attributed to specific commissioners? Or, because I actually don't think I was there for that discussion either.
You were.
I do, I was, okay. Oh, boy. So, you know, I think, I don't think that we have to say like so-and-so said this and so-and-so said that. You know, in general, I think then it should be some reason. I think who, how people vote probably is kind of good by name, I believe. And also, I think it is important when people like volunteer to do something, it should say who is, you know, just for follow-up. You know, when you volunteer to be on a committee or to, you know, to follow up on things, I think it's important to be named because that helps all of us remember what we're supposed to be doing.
Is that a first time? I've never heard of that before, but okay, that's a Robert rule. I'm sorry, Dan Addisanda.
That's right. This is a quick question with unknown people we might need to talk to. I understand that the meetings are recorded and put on BCTV on YouTube, essentially. And I suppose the bigger question regarding the minutes might be, you know, first of all, do they reflect those recordings? And then the recordings are obviously not anonymous. So I don't know if that's an issue that we want to consider as a matter of, you know, whether that should be happening or not, if, if the anonymous question is, is really an important point.
Well, coming for me, it was just a question of, I was just curious about it and I knew getting the answer would help me understand. Well, coming for me, it was just a question of, I was just curious about it and I knew getting the answer would help me understand a bit about things, but I wasn't necessarily pushing one way or another. And I think, I think we're here. You know, we should feel confident and have conviction in our choices. So I'm all for, you know, names, being named for substantial things like a vote. But as far as discussion, I think it's, it's not important to say, you know, who said what and he said this, she said that.
Oh.
And I think that's where it came from, Tom. I think you'll also find that my style of minutes is a bit different than Andrew's. And so it might be a little bit less of an issue than, than you see. Prudence is right, it's a summary. I think I reflect the summary a little bit different. And so you know, as to being on BCTV, that's a requirement, particularly when we're in this emergency orders, we actually do have to have a recording of the, of the meeting, so. I think it'll resolve itself as we, as I write up the minutes for now.
Okay. Yeah, it's interesting to see like the town, town representative town meeting minutes.
Yeah.
Even though they go on for 14 hours, they're shorter than, than the planning commission meeting.
Yeah, I tend to write full minutes just because I need it for myself to go back.
Yeah.
But certainly, that is not a requirement of the law. It can be more like.
Yeah, just actions basically and votes. Okay, so.
I have to agree with you on that, Tom and Sue, because I've noticed that even when we have the other committee, it helps you to go back to see who either put to, ask for a part on the agenda or something, you could find that and reflect how that was presented and who presented it. So that does have a lot of validity.
Yeah, it is helpful. Okay, let's vote on those minutes unless there's any corrections. Hearing none, all in favor, raise your hands.
Aye.
Prudence, Dan, Doran, and myself. I think Kate and Gary have to sit that one out.
Yeah, we can't raise our hand.
Yes.
Okay. Appointing the interim chair and vice chair if necessary. I guess I'll let Sue start us off with that as well and give the context.
Yeah, well, so we have an annual meeting every July. Since we, since our chair stepped down, I spoke to Tom to see if he would chair this meeting, but it would be great to have an interim chair basically till July. So that position is open and then if he's willing to move forward, then we can use an interim vice chair as well. So I think, you know, the, the easiest thing to do would be to nominate somebody as interim chair, which again serves till the end of June. Doran?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to nominate Tom as interim chair.
Well, thank you.
I like.
Oh, great. Thank you. And maybe we can do a slate process. I nominate Prudence to be vice interim vice chair.
I second.
I think Doran go then.
Ah, Dory, you're quick on the draw.
Tom, are you willing to serve as interim chair?
I am.
Prudence, are you willing to serve as interim vice chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Prudence has showed up to every meeting so far since I've been a planning commissioner, so you may have no added role whatsoever. If I continue my trend.
Good, Tom. That makes me feel good. And it's interim through June, so. That's, that's, that makes me feel good, too.
You can really dip your toes into doing nothing additional.
Okay, all in favor of the slate, please raise your hand or say aye.
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 Okay, that is unanimous, six, zero. One thing I should have mentioned in announcements, I'm going to throw it in now and then we'll move on, is that there is one opening still on the planning commission. I'm not sure how it's going to get filled. We need, as Kate knows, we need the planning commission to announce that opening. I'm hoping that they're gonna, you know, try to make an appointment before they open it up to the usual June announcement, but I don't know that yet, so I'll have to check. But, yeah. If you know somebody.
Sure.
Actually, I don't know if they submitted a, an application. Jackson Stein, you just ran for select board actually was interested. And I don't know if they, they may not have submitted an application, but they did express interest.
Yeah, I don't believe I've seen an, an application come through from Jackson.
Dan, did you have a comment on this?
That was, I was going to say, I thought I remembered someone had expressed interest already.
Okay. I hear noise coming from Prudence's box, but I think that's not a comment.
I think tomorrow they're going to make announcements on select board about what openings, because as far as the advertising part, what openings they have now at the meeting, so that, people, I don't know if that's on that part of the agenda too soon.
So if somebody knows Jackson and wants to reach out to them.
Can you just drop the link? I always can't, I, I still can't find it sometimes on the website.
Oh, yeah, I'll drop the link in here.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Well, let's move on to maybe the meat of this meeting, which is familiarizing all, especially all the new commissioners, which is not just Gary and Kate, but depending on how you define it, Dan's pretty new and Doran's been here a few months. So, and it's always good for review for Prudence and I. I think we'll turn it over to our resident expert, Sue Fillion, to lead us off talking about the bylaws and our values that we came up with and rules of procedure.
Great, I'm going to take them a little bit out of order. I'm going to start with the bylaws. These are basically kind of the, the, they address the organization of the planning commission and they kind of define the authority that the planning commission has, which comes from state statute. And they also kind of address state requirements about open meeting law and warning of agendas and all of that. So it's a commission of seven members, and so a quorum is four. So to hold a meeting or to take any action, we need to have four members present. Currently, as you know, we're meeting on the first Monday of the month on Zoom. Prior to COVID, we met same time at six o'clock on the first Monday, but we met in the library meeting room. Before that, it was the select board meeting room. We made the move to the library because we were hoping it would be a more welcoming place for members of the public to come. So when, when we move out of this Zoom realm and meet in person again, we can decide where the best place to meet is. So we have three roles. Actually, this reminds me that probably at some point we, we need an interim clerk, which really is, if, if, Tom, if the vice chair does nothing, the clerk does even less. It's kind of.
As long as you don't, as, as long as you show up every time, Sue.
That's right.
And even.
So we, I, I like Doran.
We need to warn it, so we'll do it at the next meeting. But fortunately for the planning commission, it is staffed by a town employee, so we do the minutes, we take care of the warnings and, and all of that and make sure that we're in compliance. Yeah, so I can go over those specifically, or we can, you know, if you're interested in, Dan?
Yeah, just a quick question, Sue. You mentioned nine members, excuse me, seven members?
Yes.
I'm looking at the, the bylaw and it says not less than three and nor more than nine? Is that?
That's interesting.
I'm just, I'm just pointing it out if that's incorrect or if there's some reason we, you know, need seven.
So I think the town charter has that it's a seven member board statute. State statute allows between three and nine, but the town charter defines it as seven.
Okay.
Thank you for seeing that. Maybe we want to make a change to the bylaw come.
I, I thought I would read along with you and I would just noticed the difference.
Yeah.
Pretty sure there's a few really small towns that only have, like, they can only find three people.
If that.
So I think it adjusts a little bit.
Yeah, definitely. A couple of key points. Yeah, I went over quorum. You can read about the meeting notice. Again, that's something we take care of. We just need to post agendas. We set our meeting dates at the beginning of the year, so I'll send them along to all of you so you have the dates. Occasionally, we have a holiday on a Monday. And we typically hold the meeting that first Wednesday of the month or that, the Wednesday after the first Monday. If that's, if that's what happens. So we run into usually Labor Day, sometimes the Fourth of July, depending on when it falls. So I'll send you that list. And then under open meeting law, you know, we have to post the agenda several places. We try to do that at least 48 hours in advance.
Is that going on the new website that we have, Sue, that's coming up or, because they're reconstructing, I understand, okay.
Yep, agendas are on the website now. They're a little bit tricky to find, but they're there. If you're not able to make a meeting, if you could let me know or Tom, if you prefer. But just let us know. It's good to know before the meeting and if we have a forum or if we're not going to have a forum. And we're just asking that you, you know, try to make the meetings the best that you can. And then the conflict of interest. I'm actually going to have some training on this a little later this month, so I can come back and train a little bit more on conflict of interest. Basically, you are not to have any direct or indirect financial interest of any kind in a matter that's before the planning commission. I would say, for example, Kate, you're a Realtor. There's several landlords who, you know, small landlords who are on the planning commission. If you're making a decision on something that has like equal ramifications for everybody in town or all landlords or all Realtors or something like that, that's not a conflict of interest. Been determined not to be, but if you're going to have direct financial interest, you know, you probably want to recuse. So that could be, maybe we're changing the zoning on of a parcel of land where you're selling the property or you own that property and you're going to get some different views. And we're talking about that, that's probably something that you'd want to recuse. In all my years, I've never seen a planning commissioner need to recuse.
I possibly, I probably would, even if it was like kind of a gray, even if it's slightly gray, I'll probably recuse just, it's the license on the line. It's, you know, it's serious stuff and I don't want to
Yeah.
any gray areas. I'm very black and white, so I like to be clear.
I think we often try aspire and often achieve kind of voting by consensus, even though sometimes we have split votes. So e- even if one person does have to recuse themselves, I think it's more often than not going to change, you know, turn, turn the vote in the other direction, so.
Um. And then yeah, I think that's, that's about it to cover for the bylaws. We review them at the annual meeting in July and we can make changes. We can bring up changes beforehand. If you, if you've looked, once you get a chance to look through them, if you haven't already, just reach out and, you know, we can always bring something up sooner. Tom?
Sue, yeah. With that talk at RTM about reimbursing the select board and paying them, I noticed similar wording in ours about reimbursing for necessary and whatever expenses. And that made me think about at least, you know, one or two prior and maybe current, I don't know, planning commissioners who may have children, for example, and could use childcare, especially when we, when we return back to, if we do a meeting in person. So I'm wondering if that's ever been done and if that would work out and how a commissioner would go about taking advantage of that.
You know, this is the second time this clause has come up and I think it comes, I don't know if it's from the charter or from statute. It came up with the agricultural advisory committee and I need to look into what that is intended to cover and I'll bring up the childcare expenses as well.
Okay, great.
I think it sits in several of the board bylaws, but I, yeah, I don't know what it's intended to cover.
Well, that's like define compensate in what manner, break it, I mean, just like you were saying about the ad committee too, about how would you compensate? Is it just for, you know, people need childcare, is that for transportation, people need help? And I don't know if they drafted anything up about that. With the, how would you put it out? How would a person apply for that? Like Tom was saying, what type of application? So I don't know, something you have to bring to the select board to see how they would put that together. So that way it's submitted to the proper people who handle childcare. And that's another issue too. I think we were discussing time at RTM, so it's great to bring it up and say, how is it structured?
Yeah, exactly.
I'll definitely look into that and report back.
Great. Dan?
Yeah, before we leave the bylaws, I, just since I have them up, it's really a question of, you know, future interests, I guess. Under section four, powers and duties, it says the commission may, right, and then there is a list of 13 possible things. I guess it'd be valuable for me to go through some of those, but one of them in particular, it's interesting, is number 10, participate in the Wyndham Regional Commission's planning program. Is that something we do by default or do we have to actively do that?
Um, we do it by default, kind of. So their planning program is they offer, they offer reviews, particularly if we're writing a town plan. If we want our plan to be approved, then, you know, we need to do certain things and they'll come in and evaluate that. And they also come in and do evaluations. We haven't had one in a couple of years, but like every, generally every two to three years, they'll come in and they'll kind of check in what is the town doing with their planning program. And not from a planning department, but what has the planning commission been working on? And that's kind of part of, I think, how they, you know, how their work program is structured and what their responsibility is from the state. It's listed in the state statute is, so. So, yeah, it happens by default. We don't have to actively seek that out. And then to that point, both Tom and I are regional planning commissioners for the town of Rattleboro. And so we do participate a lot with the Wyndham Regional Commission and their different various programs. So I see that the bylaws have a rules of procedure, but one of the things that we worked on last summer kind of and through the fall was kind of a separate rules of procedure document. And so that one was in the Google Drive as well. Do you want me to bring it up or do you all have it?
Yeah, could you bring that up so we all, I guess, could be on the same page? Because I got, we didn't see that.
Sure.
Thank you, Sue.
Yeah.
Oh, were you all able to, you know, did that Google Drive work for you guys? New people, were you at least able to click it and get it open and? Gary?
Yeah. Yes, yes. I'm sorry, Tom.
Great. Yeah, we've only had that for like a year or a year and a half now, so it's been a big improvement and help, I think.
So this rules of procedure doc, you know, we kept talking about putting things into it and it never really got formalized with the planning commission, but it kind of sat out there and in space. And so this was kind of the first attempt to bring it before the planning commission and it probably has some additional information in there that we want to discuss. But meetings, it again goes over our meetings and basically we've been, we've been fairly good about keeping, keeping our meetings to two hours and trying to end at eight o'clock. And so I kind of formalized that with a proceeding, you know, a rule that if we're going to go past eight, then, you know, we should take a vote. And not go later than eight thirty unless we have unanimous consent or super majority, sorry, four or five. Four of five members. I took this from Manchester, Vermont, so I probably need to fix that four or five. A super majority for us would be five of seven, six of seven. But basically we could then extend the meeting. We'd also talked in the fall about, you know, how we wanted it to be that, you know, how the agenda was set and when materials would be needed. So if we had a member of the public that wanted to come speak or have something on the agenda more to be more direct, anybody can come speak at a meeting like we had a guest tonight, but if you want an actual item on the agenda, then we need it earlier because Tom and I will talk and the, or the chair and I talk and the agenda gets set, so we need to know about that. And then if they have any materials that they want to submit to the planning commission, the background documentation, we need that by the Friday before the meeting. So that's kind of rule three. So that's kind of rule three and rule four.
Quick question, Sue, rule three says the planning directors designate me are responsible, designate me would be chairperson, correct?
No, so if we, if the planning technician role is filled, and for some reason, you know, that person is, is helping on the agenda that month.
Okay.
So a staff person would be the designate.
Ah, okay.
Sue, I've got a question on three as well.
Yep.
It, it came from the sentence, the last sentence of the middle paragraph, that says, supporting documentation for an agenda item must then be submitted by the last Thursday of the month. What am I trying to, so that makes me think, so, so what if a, a guest, you know, a non-commissioner has an item, has supporting documentation for an agenda item that wasn't of their proposal? It's, I mean, it's so trivial maybe, but it's just that word, then.
Oh, I get it, yeah.
Yeah, because, because rule number four is applicable to guests as well.
You're right, yeah. Yep, I can remove then.
So, so we're saying all agenda items should be due by the Monday before, or, you know, last Monday of the month? And then, all supporting docs, if they're from commissioners, must be due by the last Friday. But if they're from other people, it has to be the last Thursday?
I'm fine with it being the last Friday, or, that's fine. Actually, could we move them both to the last Thursday? Because I would take Friday to get all the materials out. I think the last Thursday is preferable, whether it's coming from a commissioner or a public.
Yeah, so, so new commissioners in particular, I think the motive for this was, you know, what, what I've found, being on a few different committees and stuff, is, is there can be kind of a bombardment of materials during the day, leading up to the, the day of the meeting? And, you know, unless you, unless you, you know, have the understanding that the Monday of the meeting is going to be reserved for cramming and getting everything in, and just sitting by your email and looking for updates, and then trying to study up on that, and, and have something, you know, coherent and intelligible to say in, in a couple hours. It just, it was too much of a, you know, and everyone, everyone makes mistakes, so I think it was just good to to formalize when a deadline is for materials to submit that you expect other people to review and, and have thoughts on. But if you submit after that, you know, no, there should be no expectation of review.
And then, rule five, we spent a lot of time last summer, we'll get into the values and our our equity kind of statements next, but we spent a lot of time about, you know, trying to figure out how we can make the Planning Commission in a welcoming place. And so, we had come up with these meeting, meeting norms, which were to trust each other, respect each other's times, listen actively, and be respectful and open. So, kind of short and sweet, but that's how we expect to treat each other, and then also treat the public, and anybody that comes before us. And then, final rule is about public participation. I think Tom kind of demonstrated it when we had a member of the public here tonight. So, under open meeting law, we are required to have a public comment. You see it on the select board, you'll see it on every board, so we have that. But the Planning Commission has always welcomed the member of the public to the, kind of sit at the table and have a discussion with us, so. He called on her early this evening, because she was here, even though it wasn't on the agenda for that exact time. We want to be respectful of people's time. And then, if she was here to have talked about a certain agenda item, we would have welcomed her in on that conversation. You know, after the planning commissioners had a chance to talk, but we like to kind of operate in a roundtable kind of way, it's not formal. You know, under Zoom, it might be feel a little formal, because you raise your hand, and you'll get recognized, but when we were in person, you know, we sat around a table and we operate that way.
Yep.
So with that part, I was, could this be amended, if you have an idea? I don't know if you guys would consider. Well, I was just thinking with number five, which is meeting norms, trust each other, we bring a full, I would put diverse and emotional and psychological, because diversity is one of our biggest things now in the community, becoming diverse. So if anyone else sees that, they'll say, wow, this is a rather diverse community and committee. So people seeing that would say, wow, they are pretty much open to a lot of different other ideas and thoughts for people and businesses coming into the community. This is the one.
Yeah, I mean, I, I support it, you know, always when there's a, some sort of mantra or creed, it kind of brings me back to, on their mind, it kind of makes me think of like, group think, and, and like, and everyone thinking the same thing and being on the same page, which is good in some ways, but it's also like, maybe, maybe we aren't all of one minds, but we should have, you know, good, at least we agree on being welcoming and, you know, being respectful, but I, I like adding that word. That's me personally.
I don't know.
I don't know if we have to vote or general.
I think we can use that Robert's Small Assemblies, where we just kind of, if, if everybody kind of agrees, I don't think we.
Are there any comments or opposition to that, or clarification, or edits?
No, that sounds really good.
True.
It, it sounds, it sounds great. Yeah, the, the, the noun that you're modifying there is selves, so I would actually put diverse next to selves, if it matters. So, you know, emotional, psychological, diverse selves, does that, does it make sense?
We'll open in diverse committee.
Yeah, so if you're changing, yeah, I don't know how much you're changing, yeah. Yeah, you could change the sentence more.
If you got the psychological, that sounds a little extreme, I mean, psychologically speaking.
I'm confused, so which way are we going with this?
I would be, we're open and diverse committee. It was a broad spectrum of different ideas and beliefs what we bring to the table, that will help the committee become stronger for us, not just the committee, but for the community. And we invite anyone else to come in and join as well too, because that's opening up doors for people from different air, different spectrums of just, just committee, but the community that come into the town, and that are in the town, because when you have that closing psychological side, wow, this looks more like they're, they're trying to do a, you know, psych profile on each other to see what's this doesn't seem, I used to do marketing in New York, sorry.
Well, Gary, if you think, if you think there should be a big change to it, instead of just one word here or there, maybe you can, what am I trying to say? Draft something and send it around, you know, send it to Sue or I, and we'll share it for the next meeting. So everyone can consider that, if it is going to be more than just a word insertion.
Right, because that's basically, I guess, what the town is aiming for, is diversity, openness, equality, equity, and I think that being put in there makes a difference.
I think you'll see that in what I'm going to talk about next as well.
That's a good point, too.
So, well, let me just jump to that, to our values and equity discussion. So, last summer, definitely, you know, following George Floyd's murder, we spent a lot of time talking about racism in planning and equity, and, you know, certainly, planning and zoning have been really responsible for perpetuating discriminatory practices against community of colors and LGBTQ communities. And so, we, you know, just kind of really briefly, you know, redlining, which is how banks decided the values of homes and where you could lend, other home mortgage practices, private restrictive covenants, where schools were cited, the public housing, there were just so many policies designed to create and perpetuate discriminatory practices. And if you haven't read the book, I highly recommend The Color of Law. We have a copy in the office.
Color of Law?
The Color of Law.
I'm going to go on Amazon. Actually, the bookstore is at.
Yeah.
Money, what was it?
The Color of Law.
Who's, who's the author?
Richard Rothstein. I'll, I'll drop it in the chat box when I have a moment.
I'll get emailed, I could, I could dig it up, that's perfect.
Yeah.
That's, that's great.
So, at that time, we did a little research, and we kind of came to consensus that we, within our work and the decisions that we were making as a planning commission, that we wanted to consider four aspects of equity. And these are on the town's website. Let me share that screen. Sometimes jumping around is a little bit. Have to find which screen I'm on.
Well, Sue's doing that, there's just, I, I struggled to ask the question, because a simple Google search would answer it. In the, in the powers and duties section of the bylaws for the Planning Commission, you know, mainly what we focused on is land development, but kind of a subset of that, it said economic and social development. I kind of wondered exactly what is social development? Is it like, land development for healthcare and education and civics and stuff? Does that?
Social development.
Because I read that, and sometimes I'm kind of seeing like, oh, what sort of powers might we have that, that people don't realize? And I was kind of stretching and wondering if that qualified, or if that, if that totally is just a, you know, type of land development subset as well.
Well, I think, you know, I mean, I think this is older statute language, but I think, you know, health and, you know, good community design can fall under social, are there public spaces where people can recreate or enjoy outdoors? So I think it could be parks planning, if that was something that we were doing with Wreck and Parks.
Right.
It could be, what, what were the two that you suggested, Tom? Health and?
Oh, I said, I said things related to health or education, but, yeah.
Yes, I mean, I do think they would fall under that.
Yep, okay. Anyway, let's get back to the.
Okay, so, the four types of equity that we talked about was distributional equity, so who benefits and who loses from the decisions that we make, and obviously, that's big in the housing realm, so, you know, you think about it in terms of zoning, if we're making decisions that higher density housing should be in the neighborhoods that already have higher density housing, well, you know, is that what if people want to live elsewhere in town, but that higher density housing's not allowed? So, you know, looking about, looking at distributional. Structural equity, how to overcome historical racism and institutional racism that has been reinforced by city planning projects throughout the country. So that might, that also might be dealing with housing and, you know, the public housing. You know, where are they located? Well, they tend to be in the floodplains, and obviously, Rattleboro's been doing a lot to move some of the public housing out of, out of that. And then, trans or intergenerational equity, so how the decisions we're making today affect opportunities for future generations. And then procedural equity, making sure that we're including affected populations you know, in the decision-making. So we'll talk a little bit about that, I think, when we go through some of our projects. So that was the equity piece. And then we also went through this exercise, you might not see that well. The Just Cities, which is from Harvard Design School, which is, they're, they've got this, these values that, there was a whole big list, the Planning Commission narrowed it down to, I think there was ten values listed here, belonging, sustainability, creative innovation, togetherness, happiness, connectivity, equity, vitality, equality, diversity, and ownership. So these were the values that we felt like, if we're always taking them into consideration when we're doing our projects, then maybe we'll have better outcomes. So these are just things to keep in mind as we're moving through projects, we're having discussions. By all means, you should be asking the questions of, how is this benefiting, you know, X, Y, and Z, and that kind of thing.
Yep.
So, quick, I was just asking, when you did this, was this something, a survey that you get, did basically with the community, for people who actually experienced these type of inconsistencies with their lives, dealing with getting any type of social justice, demographically or structurally or infrastructurally, financially, equity, you know, because basically, I don't know if this is something that, that the group did, or this is something that in general, the whole community, what they, what, what challenges they met?
Yeah, so, that's a good question. The Just City values that we did was just as a planning commission. The Just City framework is really designed to, as you undertake a particular project, you want to do this with the community, or, you know, the, as part of the process. We kind of adopted it for looking at different values that we could bring to our work.
Okay.
Yeah, it was kind of a period of, of, of learning and study amidst, you know, amongst the commissioners, and, you know, sharing some materials, and trying to, you know, like Sue said, refocus our, our perspectives to on these values as we move forward.
Yeah, marginalization and things to that aspect, because a lot of times, they, in the BIPOC, a lot of people marginalize in certain areas demographically, so that being an add-on to it, not just that indigenous, so I think this is, I guess I'm going in that direction with all the new plans and all the new proposals that are coming out after RTM, where we're trying to head with this, to be added to what, as, as the site, is that what we're going into that same direction? Does that make sense, Tom?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Well, I can't think about everything. I need other people. And because it looked like something was right at the tip of her tongue.
Yeah, I, I do think that that was the direction that the previous Planning Commission was going in, and I think we felt really good about that, so sharing it, and, and, you know, maybe there's, you know, maybe at some point, we can go through the Just Cities values on a project by project. And they can, you know, they can change. But I think it's kind of moving in that direction, and I think as we go through the projects, I tried to pick up some pieces that can show you what we're doing to kind of
Right, right.
Address.
And that could be something separate, Sue, that we could add in there underneath that, I don't know if that makes sense, because we know after RTM, we're all trying to get to that point where everyone's on that same equitable plane. I mean, these are great values. And that's the key with just values, but as far as putting into plan the actions of what we're doing, putting that in, this is what we're currently doing in action, and that could be a separate.
Yeah, on the web, you're suggesting?
Yeah. I mean, once you put the new one together, you know, adding women over empowerment, BIPOC, LBGQ, all these things put in there, this is where we're heading to, to to come to about demographic marginalization, because this is good for values and ethics, but now it's time to put the actions of what we're doing into play, to show, this is what we're doing now.
I have a question as well. I'm, because I'm kind of, I've been thinking as we're talking, what's, I think I'm kind of confused or vague on, what's, what's really the scope of what we can do as it relates to economic and social development? The reason I'm asking this question is we are all seeing, you know, rental rates, especially in Rattleboro, untenable for local people. Do we have, to me, that is one of the greatest things that are pushing down the marginalized communities that are not able to get out of this rental cycle, you know, because they're, the rents are so high, and they're not able to get out of unsafe situations. A lot of them are maybe in apartments that need major renovations, and, you know, or it's extremely non-efficient, so they're paying really high utility bills. Do we have?
Yeah.
Can we shape that, or, or address it directly?
Yeah, I think, no, I think absolutely. I think for the second part, when you talk about utilities and stuff, that's, that's maybe more with building codes, and what, you know, insulation and stuff, but in the first case, with maybe there, you know, being more more demand than supply for rental, rental units, let's say. I mean, recently, in September, we passed that interim zoning bylaw, which in a few zones allowed which in a few zones allowed, you know, multi-unit buildings to, to a greater degree than was previously allowed. And, you know, another random example is that, that we haven't done, and I'm not espousing for necessarily, is that like, you know, the urban center or the mixed use district, could it be enlarged? Or the residential neighborhood could be enlarged into the rural neighborhood. And then that allows a greater density. We can allow, you know. Yeah, so those, those are examples. It's all in the land use regs, you know.
I'm thinking more about.
There's more that could be added.
Like having a rental cap, you know, not.
Oh.
I think it's, it's hard for me to stomach sometimes seeing these one-bedroom apartments for seventeen hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
Like, that just seems wrong to me. And there's no way other than building more, getting more inventory somehow. That's, as we know, building materials are extremely expensive, you know, the, the ability to build right now. I think we need, you know, a hundred more apartments now for people looking for housing. And it's just seems like the gap is getting wider and there's no way to kind of cap it. It's, it's only getting worse.
I want to, I want to call on Doran, because I think he can bridge, having a little experience on the planning commission. He can bridge those concerns and.
The hardest thing is that being a certain town size in the state of Vermont, following Dylan's rules. We, planning commission suggests things obviously to the select board and the select board approves them. The select board cannot even approve a rental cap in the state of Vermont, because it's technically, to be a Dylan's lot, has not gone through a bigger town and then been a passed by the state legislature. So, yeah, so no, we even as a town, the planning commission could not put a rent cap.
Right.
It's got to come from a, that's got to come from a state level. What, what we could do as a planning commission is we could suggest that Brattleboro request that of the state. And that could be something that could be approved, like as a document put out by the select board of Brattleboro, coming via the planning commission. At least as from my, what I've been able to observe from, coming at it from, from a, a ten's point of view, and from the planning commissions, that we cannot put a rent cap.
Right. Unless there's another pressing comments or anything else Sue wants to add to, to this section about bylaws, values and rules of procedure. I think we're, we're kind of, we're running quite a bit behind schedule here. We're supposed to move on at six forty-five to the discussing like the projects and timelines. So I think we should, we should get to that right now. So there's enough time for, for Prudence to talk about the BCAT thing at the end. And so we can hopefully adjourn at eight. So if that's okay, let's move on, let's move on. Sue, take it away.
All right. You may have seen in the folder, there was a list of projects and I tried to give some priority to it, to it in a deadline when we knew that we had one. So just kind of wanted to walk through and we're going to pick up on housing in this discussion and so, let's start with the downtown design plan. I want to show you something, so I'm not going to bring up the spreadsheet of projects yet. But the downtown design plan was a project that we started in twenty nineteen. We did a lot of public outreach in the fall of twenty nineteen. And then in twenty twenty, as the plan was kind of being written and kind of wrapped up, COVID hit. And it kind of really delayed everything, kind of chopped up the progress. And, yeah, it's been a little bumpy since then. We were all ready to roll it out to the public. So it is a draft plan. Ideally, it's going to go to the select board for adoption. But we need to get it back out to the public so that they kind of, we get the buy-in. I'm sorry, I'm just having trouble screen sharing.
How many of you noticed that the public engagement part of the downtown design plan before your commissioners? Did you all know it was happening? Did you comment? Did you, did you contribute at all?
So, yeah, part of the public engagement for this was two surveys. We actually had decent response, but this would have been in the summer of twenty nineteen. It had to do with, you know, how, how do you use public spaces? What are your perceptions of public space in the downtown? And then there was a creative placemaking kind of contest that we did. And then we selected three projects. One was a bike lane on Flat Street. One was an alleyway improvement project by Insight Photography, where they hung some art on the outside. And then the, the third one, gosh, it just.
I remember number two.
Library.
The library, thank you. There was a story walk on Main Street. With the, you know, there was some activities, art making at the library. And so those were the projects to kind of demonstrate if you kind of, how you could repurpose public space and, and live in it. So that, that happened in the fall of, or September of twenty nineteen. And then there was a three-day charrette where we actually had landscape architects working out of one eighteen Elliot Street and a couple of different activities, walkabouts to kind of assess the public space. And then some iterative design sessions where the public could come. I have to say, those were not well attended. That was kind of unfortunate, because there was a lot of talent there. But, but we didn't have great turnout.
Was this with the sanitizers, Sue? The hand sanitizers with?
No, that, that came after. But that is kind of like a creative placemaking project art. And, you know, that was addressing a public health need.
Yeah, that was good.
Yeah, so this plan is, if you've had a chance to look at it, it's very graphic and interactive. It's in a, what's called a story map function. We decided that we didn't want to have a plan that was a written document that gets stuck on the shelf. We wanted it to kind of be more web interactive. And so we were looking at, you know, we kind of had a couple of different themes that we wanted to address. So improving the circulation downtown. And we had other public meetings, I should say. And, and a lot of people felt that walking along Main Street is not necessarily very pleasant. But oftentimes they're getting off the, off the sidewalks on Main Street and taking these backwards. Like whether you use the High Grove and the Harmony Lot and, you know, kind of other ways, because it's a little bit quieter, wider sidewalks or wider spaces to walk in. We wanted to look at how can we support, you know, keep, keep downtown economically thriving? And because this plan is coming at it from a public space perspective, it's about how do we make places that people want to be at? Because if they're there, then maybe they go into the businesses and they buy a cup of coffee or, you know, get something from one of the other stores. But basically, we are going to create a downtown that people want to keep coming back to. We wanted to, we knew there's a couple of stormwater issues in downtown, so we were really hoping to increase resiliency by having green stormwater infrastructure. There's some challenges to that, so it kind of didn't, you know, there's pieces of it in the plan, particularly when you look at the High Grove lot, kind of envisioning, greening that up a little bit. But there's some challenges to other parts of downtown and kind of having a lot more green infrastructure. And then we wanted to revitalize the public spaces with this creative placemaking idea. So using the arts and other programming activities to kind of, again, make them places that people want to be. And so, you know, like, like I mentioned, we were kind of digging into this plan, kind of, it was getting ready and then COVID hit. And we needed to kind of, we paused a little bit and we went back and we revisited it to see, you know, was the public, were the recommendations in this plan making sense as we moved forward with COVID? And really in the end, I think we came away in Prudence and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong. I think we said, yeah, no, this, this does meet the public health issues that, that we're facing, we're likely to continue to face. Having wider sidewalks or allowing, you know, better bicycle access for downtown seems to make space. It seems to make that sense. Obviously, we saw things like parklets last summer, and you'll see them again this summer as ways to improve outdoor seating for the restaurants. And I don't know, I really love being on Elliot Street and seeing those lights on the Elliot Street Fish and Chips one. So I think, I think those are, you know, effective and that's kind of the, what we want to demonstrate through this plan. So, but again, it gets back to, is this really what the community wants? And that's kind of the step we're at. So this plan has a lot of setting and context. And then it kind of, you can jump around if you haven't played with it. You can get a lot of information just by clicking on a, you know, this is the Debra Street Riverfront Park, a little bit of background about it, the size. And so, again, it's an interactive display of information. The public space strategies, this is kind of that way around, which is kind of what it's, it's organized on. And probably what we need, maybe some of the biggest feedback on. And that kind of looks, let me see, you know, starts at different public spaces and then works its way up Main Street. And then, you know, other strategies as to how to deal with the sidewalks, public lighting, because something that we read, that we learned, and if you click on the public space survey, it's going to give you, pops open a PDF that kind of tells you what the survey respondents had to say.
Wow, where was I at? Oh, that's right, I just had surgery.
Well, it's a while ago now, and that's kind of a problem. That's kind of the problem.
I love it though. I mean, it's great, but this, is this something that the Chamber of Commerce is trying to do too with the, with their improvements?
Well, I would say that DBA and the Chamber are definitely key stakeholders that we need to get back out and engage with. And like I said, it was kind of the plan in March. And then Andrew left. And so it's like,
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so I think, I, you know, I don't want to, I think we're going to have to spend more time with this plan. And I think that we need to be really diligent and probably need that push to kind of, with it. I might need some assistance, but I'd like for you each to kind of become familiar with this plan.
Yeah, Sue put together a great document.
This is awesome. I didn't even know this existed.
Yeah. Oh, well, well, I'm full. It was these, it was consultants that we hired who mostly put this together. But what I'm saying is to help everyone get up to speed on things in the Google Drive folder for this meeting. There's a PDF that shows like links, little descriptions and links to, to all these different studies and contexts that, you know, give you, really help you. I mean, it's a ton of reading if you were to actually read it all. But it gives you a lot of context about what's happened and what projects and plans and designs. And the planning commission's been involved with for like the last ten, fifteen years.
And how much was this website too? Does this seventy-five thousand also or no?
No, no. This is, no. No, this is just a published, it's a, I mean, we have a subscription to Esri, so it's, it's just a tool in the G I.
Awesome, I love it. I, I'd like to get involved with that and get in there aggressively and get out there, market this and make it happen.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's an interesting time and it, it definitely, I want to show you one of the pretty exciting ones that, it, it has to do with Bridge Street, which is the road that Whitstone Station is on. And with the bridge project, that's an area that is not going to have as much traffic. It's going to need vehicular traffic, but not as much, because they won't be going over the existing Hinsdale Bridges. And so the idea there is, I'm just trying to find it, it might take me a while. The idea there is that it becomes kind of a shared street, you know, where, this is going to have it.
I could talk about it while you look if you want, Sue.
That'd be great, Prudence, thank you.
Yeah, so, I'm also really excited about that, that part of the plan. Yeah, so it's a shared street and, and basically you take away the sidewalk and, you know, the delineation. So it's not just people here and cars in the, you know, in most of the space. So cars can still travel very slowly down to the train station and so on. But, but it's an area where people can, you know, bike more safely and walk. And I think that would be a really powerful connection to the, to the Greenway that hopefully will exist with the, with the bridge project.
Yeah, so.
I think in, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Prudence.
I was just going to say, aren't they called like a woofer or something like that?
Yeah, woofer. You'll see here, there's a little video. So if you get into this plan, there's a, there's a video. I'm not going to play it now. It's just two minutes long. But it's kind of interesting. So that's a really cool idea in there, in this plan. That's probably, yeah. So I think that for the May meeting, you know, coming to you with a timeline and of how we're going to do this, I think would be good to kind of pull the feet to the fire and let's get it out there. I think that, I know that there's a couple of select board members that are interested in this as well. So I, I think it's, it's time to, to get it out there. So one of the things, so I'm going to move on from this. I encourage you to look at it, reach out with questions. I'm sure we'll talk about it again soon. The next project that I wanted to share was zoning amendments. So since twenty seventeen, the planning commission has been kind of cataloging a bunch of small tweaks to our land use regulations. Things that where we felt like the zoning was a little bit too strict or restrictive. And, you know, we could open things up or where maybe staff had some issues and we just wanted to clarify things. Or a couple of the ideas came from the Development Review Board, because they had difficulties finding things to approve that they really wanted to and they felt that were good for the town. Here, I'm talking about creative signs. That signs that are different and they don't necessarily meet the, the regulations, but they add a lot of character. So we had a series of amendments that at our March meeting, we were all ready to take care, take forward to public meetings, but felt like, wow, with lots of new people on the planning commission, it would probably be good to just kind of hold on that for now, get you up to speed and then bring those to public hearing. The process for a zoning amendment is the planning commission holds public hearings and then we decide to send it on to the select board and they hold public hearings and then they have adoption authority. So it is, it's a bit of a process. You know, you have to do public hearing notices and kind of, there's some timelines involved with that. For the most part, the zoning regulations that we're proposing, you know, I'd like to move them forward. They're not, they're a priority, but they're not time sensitive. As soon as we can get them passed, that's, you know, that's good. We think it's good for the town. There is one set of land use regulations, which are amendments to our flood hazard regulations. So right now, we are part of the National Flood Insurance Program. And so we have to have, you know, things that are going to be built in the floodplain have to be built to a certain standard. Right now, you have to build it one foot above the base flood elevation. We're also part of the community rating system and we're a class eight. And by being part of that system, we take, we do certain actions, which then qualify people in our community who have flood insurance for a discount. And class eight is a really good class. It's probably about as high as a community of Rattleboro size can get. And that means that all policy holders have a 10% discount, which is not insignificant, because if you know anything about flood insurance, it's moved, it used to be heavily subsidized and now it's kind of moved to actuarial rates. So it's gotten very expensive for lots of people. And in our town, Frost Street, we have a lot of floodplain and we have a lot of houses in the floodplain. We've got mobile home parks in the floodplain. We've got businesses in the floodplain and we've got residences in the floodplain as well. So, if we want to maintain the class eight rating, we just found out earlier, I think January, we found out that we're going to need to adopt a two-foot above base flood elevation standard. I think January, we found out that we're going to need to adopt a two foot above base flood elevation standard. And there's another change where mobile homes in a mobile home park, so like Mountain Home or Glone Park. Right now, they can be elevated four feet above base flood elevation. That's going away, they would have to meet the two foot standard.
It's four feet above ground level, right?
Yes, sorry, sorry, above ground level and they, so they can be sit on piers and, and sit up and be stabilized that way. The, so that, that is a huge difference. There are parts of Mountain Home Park that, you know, the base flood elevation is, you know, nine feet below. Or the, the ground elevation is nine feet below the base flood elevation. So we're talking like now all of a sudden you're, you're nine plus two, you're 11 feet up in the air. It's a big difference and. It could have some important ramifications. So Jessica had asked us at our last meeting, well, what kind of outreach did you do to people in the floodplains? And we hadn't done any, so this is bringing, bringing in the equity and kind of values. So we're working on a quick survey to understand who has flood insurance. Because believe it or not, it's not something the National Flood Insurance Program, we've requested that information for them, but they're not very quick at providing it. So we want to do a survey, find out who has it. Who doesn't, and if not, why? And also get a sense in, in the mobile home parks about who's looking to replace in any certain amount of time. Their mobile home. Because we're also working on a project to remove a lot of mobile homes from the floodplains. Just because they're.
I would. Worth it to add in the survey what their, what their premium is, because I, it's interesting. Sometimes some insurance companies will quote, you know, five or 6,000 and then you can get a different local guy who will do it for 1,500. You know, it's really. Different, especially, and it can be different for one neighbor to the next, so. Important to, to get a, a gauge on that as well.
Thanks.
Yep, Gary.
Wait, now the FEMA going there also, so I think they were talking about that. At one of the meetings, media, the FEMA had went in there to where I think it was. What was that when they flooded, they just moved up here by Walgreens, that was, people were relocated.
Comments?
Yeah, and I think they mentioned FEMA going in there.
They have a, they have a, or they have a floodplain mitigation project going on there, so.
Oh, right, right, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Sue, I see in this PDF you, you put together in the folder that, I don't think I knew about this. You have a little description and link to the Tri-Park master plan.
I do.
But that's from 2008, but in the description, you, you wrote that. That there's an agreement with Tri-Park in the town, that Tri-Park will. That their master plan will spell out how they relocate certain homes, which are within the floodplain or floodway. To locations within the park or others, so that plans from 2008, I mean, is that still being looked at and followed for?
2008, it was actually done in 2020.
No, well, I guess I should know about that.
The original agreement goes back to 2008, then it was revised in 2011. I may have put, I may have.
Oh, I mean, oh, that was the development agreement, okay.
Yes, yeah, yeah. If you want to hear about the Tri-Park master plan, I'll be presenting that to the select board later this month.
Okay, great, yeah, we all should.
Now, how much is that COVID relief money that's going to? The infrastructure that they're doing, that sending that money from. My pillar, I guess, is that going to be part of that money that's going to be going to the Australia parks to help them out financially as well too?
I don't know, I know they're definitely keeping an eye on the different, you know, whether it's ARPA, the, the federal funds, whether it's state funds. There, yeah, we can talk about the Tri-Park master plan. At another meeting or tune into the select board, I would recommend you listen to it. They have a lot of state support. From different agencies and it's, it's a really important project.
I, I, I think right now we should, we should strategize or say, you know, what we're going to do for the rest of the meeting. Because we have scheduled at 7:40 switching over to Prudence to talk about that. So, um. But what do you think? Sue, that it would take to do a decent job running through the rest?
I can do it really quickly or I can focus on, I think, maybe. Three more pressing. I guess I would say three, the housing action plan, I just kind of an update, because that project is getting started. We have hired, thanks to Dan and Doran's assistant and, and Jessica. And she participated in interviews, but not the final decision. We've hired Camoin 310, who is going to do, who's going to be the consultant on the project. We're asking.
I'm sorry, could you say again who we hired?
It's Camoin 310, C A M O I N. And they actually have an office out of Brattleboro. Rachel Selsky is one of their vice presidents. Her and her colleague will be working on it. I need to put together a steering committee. Felicity was participating in that project. So right now, we've got Doran and Dan, I think that they both were interested in, in staying on. So there's probably. We could have one more planning commissioner participate in that project or on the steering committee for it. That's going to come.
Is anyone interested? Or have more questions to ask? Yep, Gary.
I would be interested in that project.
Okay.
Very much.
So it's basically going to be a housing needs, a housing, housing needs analysis, kind of looking at the housing gaps. And coming up with strategies of how to, how to meet those needs. Which, you know, Kate mentioned some of the cost barriers, but you know, there are regulatory and there's maybe other non-regulatory things that the town could be doing. And, you know, we just don't really have any hard data for Brattleboro, there's a lot of anecdotal data. And there's, you know, we know the vacancy rate's really low, it can, you know, I've seen all different types of numbers. So we definitely want to work with the community and that's outreach, surveys, stakeholder groups. It's all going to be part of it, so it's a big project and the select board's very interested as well.
Yeah, and Kate maybe, or anyone else, I'm sure, the committee's not limited to just three, if other people are interested. Doran.
Uh, what I really liked about them is, A, their knowledge of small town Vermont. And B, they were very aware of the current gentrification that is going on within Brattleboro, especially just within the last year of COVID. They were also really willing in their suggestions to offer alternative ways of looking at housing. Tiny house communities, other types of communal living or land share. They were just really creative in how they suggested. How they would put in their kind of body of suggestions at the end, what they would reference and suggest. So that's why I was really excited for them to be. To be the organization to move forward with the project, because they were just already not only knowledgeable about our community and the situations we're going through. But also very much presenting other options for ways to look creatively at housing. Which is like, kind of actually how so much of Vermont is built. Going back, you know, like, there's all sorts of, of different yet religious communities, but just alternative communities have been in Vermont since. Wayback, since the turn of like, you know, since like 1900, there has been alternative type communities living in Vermont. I think we began to move, we moved away from it a bit, it was obviously like, you think about the back to land moving in the 60s and 70s. And it began to shift, and I think as lands get expensive and populations grow. Alternative communities are going to become very more likely for affordable, safe housing.
So it's an interesting project you, you, you're doing, that's great, that's something to look forward to. Now, you doing this demographically, I guess, because like, I'm on a canal, so what do I do, go door to door, knock on doors or 125 or a couple of other?
Not, not quite, it's, it won't, it won't happen like that, but.
I wouldn't, I mean, I'd do it if you have to.
I'm just keeping my eye on the time. One that I would like to get a little indication from the planning commission on is the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So this came before the planning commission, I think in January, and we talked a little about. So this is a plan that the town has, it has to be updated every five years. And we need to have a hazard mitigation plan to. Basically get funding if there's ever federal disasters or if we want FEMA funding for hazard mitigation. The planning commission provided some suggestions for consideration in the plan. It was, the question is, do you want it to come back before you, for a review of the plan? Or are you happy, there is a committee that kind of oversees the work and it would be adopted by the select board. Approved by the state hazard mitigation office. So with everything else that we have going on, do you want to see it again? Or not?
I would have to see what it was originally before I can, I guess, agree. Just to get some insight on that, some research.
So I think I put it in that documents link, so there is a link to that plan there.
I see. How soon do you need?
Prudence.
I, I would be comfortable moving forward because there was a group that studied it. And I think, I felt like for us to have an impact, we would have to really get into this. And we've got a lot of other priorities. So this is important, but it's also very time sensitive. And, you know, I personally am comfortable without, you know, not, not handling it with the planning commission again.
I agree, it's not really our, our forte, not to say we couldn't have useful comments, but it's not, it's not necessarily. Our thing anyway, so it'll be good to, to follow along and see how it develops. Dan.
Well, doesn't it need to be updated this year, Sue?
It does, it does, I think we're looking for a June, having it before the select board in June. So it's like, like they said, it's very time sensitive.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, why was, was asking how soon you needed, but I mean, if you guys are already working on this, I could just follow up and read it on the.
You could always take a look at it and if you have some feedback, you could send it to the department.
Okay.
Okay, so that, does there consensus there that you're okay with that moving forward?
I, I'd actually like for us to be involved in it, if that's what you're asking, yes or no? Even if it's in a sort of a consulting, you know, stage later on. But I don't know what the, so it says that it was done in 2016. Are you saying that the planning commission was highly involved in it then?
No, they were not highly involved in 2016. We did have a meeting, I guess it says December, that we had done a little bit of brainstorming. And I, if I recall correctly, Tom asked, was it dealing with pandemics and kind of public health issues? So the planning commission did provide a little bit of feedback this year on the types of things.
It's really heavily weighted towards flooding.
It is, flooding and.
And how to prevent risks to property and, and, and life. But, but other hazards as well.
Yeah.
So a lot of people like on the committees, like, you know, the fire chief and other people like that who deal with emergencies and responses. And, you know, Brian Bannon, the, the zoning, the building admin, you know, the zoning administrator is on there.
Yeah.
Time, so there's an urgency, basically, you're saying to move on this, rather than time, right?
Uh, there is an, an urgency for the town to re-adopt a plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
And now can we vote on that, the new members, that's something we have to abstain from since you guys already.
For the planning commission would just be kind of to review the draft probably before it went to the board.
I think when we reviewed in December, I, I think we had some, some good comments, but I, I, I don't think that they were. So it's not to say we don't have new people and fresh eyes and, and, but they weren't really. I, I don't think we, we improved it, you know, any more than one or 1%, you know, than what it was, to put it bluntly. So I mean, I think i- i- if, if it's not going to add to the committee's like stress. And to add around, you know, of, of comments, i- if it's going to be put out for just a comment period to whoever, I guess. You can pass it around to us and we can email you comments, but I don't know if we have to make it a big part of a meeting. Because the other time when it was, I don't think we were really, we certainly didn't revolutionize their draft. Kind of, we kind of poked around the edges and I don't think they can even do anything with pandemics as hazards, that's not in their forte. And that was the best I, I could come up with, so it's really flood focused and other things, so.
I'll keep this on the radar, have the conversation with Tom, if there's anything to put out there to the other planning commissioners, I'll certainly get that out there to you. Yeah. I think I'm going to end it there, just mindful of the time and. We can touch on the other things unless you want to talk about solar siding during our town, Tom, or we can.
Right, no, I thought maybe next meeting.
Okay.
You know, we'll, we'll do an update on the subcommittee. But I will just say, since we talked about the rules of procedure, if we did want to follow that. Procedure for extending the meeting, you know, with unanimous vote or whatever it was, I don't have it memorized, we have to look back at that to, to follow it, then we could. But, so someone raised their hand and make that motion or whatever, if they want to look into that. But otherwise, we want to have a stop time at eight, and so I think we're going to go to Prudence. Unless someone wants to take advantage of that extension. Prudence, take it away.
Great, thanks. So Brennerboro Coalition for Active Transportation is, you know, known as BCAT. And it's a group of local organizations and individuals that are working to promote safe, healthy and accessible transportation. For people of all ability, ages and income. So that's what that group's about. And just, I just want to give you a little bit of background about the group, a little more. Some of our accomplishments have been bike friendly roadside on Melrose Bridge, a survey of our residents last fall. We worked with the DBA on the downtown bike park glit that's outside of Vermont Artisans Designs. During the warmer, wet, warmer months. Worked with the planning commi, department on the temporary bike lanes on Flat Street that Sue mentioned earlier. And we advocated for bike lanes on Western Avenue, which is a product, a project that's very active at the moment. And created a bike repair stand at Brooks Library, things like that. So a subcommittee of BCAT that includes Wyndham Regional Commission reps, Local Motion. Which is a statewide group out of Burlington, Vermont Department of Health and Rise Vermont. Are working on a first phase of a bike walk master plan. And Andrew had been representing the planning department on that project. We think that it's really important and needed to prioritize. The most important infrastructure projects. To be able to ensure support for funding these projects, because they're often long term, they can be expensive. And. I think probably we're in agreement that much of the town's sidewalk infrastructure is in very poor shape. And that much of the town is not safe, especially the downtown and the busy, our busy arterial roads aren't safe to bike on. So we, we know families would like kids' safe bike routes, but they're often, you know, scared to have their kids. Ride or even walk to school, for example. And another fact is that navigating Brattleboro in a wheelchair is, is very difficult. So, so the idea of the, of a master plan. Is to really. Have a lot of community input to come to an agreement on what the priorities are and to really get them done. So the committee's a, an unofficial group. And so our scope right now is to document existing conditions. But we would very much like to. To see a master plan, project adopted by the town. And there's implications for staffing, for the planning department, you know, for DPW. Right now, we're taking the priorities, the bike and walk related priorities in the 2018 town plan. As our focus for, for sort of organizing the existing conditions. So. That's, that's the background, I guess, I'm hoping that we can move this to some official sanction and support from the town. You know, at some point in the not too distant future. And I'm sorry I'm by phone and can't see anybody and you can't see me.
That's okay.
You will. You will.
Yeah, maybe the high winds knocked out your your typical internet speed.
Yeah.
I'm not at home either.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on that or and and Prudence, could you mention again how how, if at all, you you might see the planning commission getting involved?
Well, for this to to really go beyond just this initial work of documenting existing conditions, we would need, you know, I'm hoping the planning commission can take this on as a as a project. And I I think it, you know, the the work, the downtown design plan, you know, addresses active transportation. So you know, it's kind of a natural next step from the downtown design plan, once that's assuming that that gets approved by the select board. But again, this this is something that it it needs to be a town plan. The town is going to have, is going to be the one that would have to you know, implement the infrastructure changes. And, you know, I I don't know how many of you bike and and probably lots of folks walk around town, but I don't know if if commission members agree that there's significant improvements needed in terms of the safety of 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 trying to get around town, not in a car.
Prudence, has this been something brought up with the Traffic Safety Committee as well, too? I was just curious.
You know, traffic safety, I I attend that. And, you know, Sue, Sue attends, obviously, as well and so on. And a lot of the I mean, I've learned a lot about you know, about some of the requirements and opportunities, you know, for improvements through traffic safety. I don't know the traffic safety would undertake a a planning effort, though, that that would be different than than what they've than than my perception of what they do. They they are definitely
I would agree with that, Prudence.
Yeah, I'm a walker. I like to walk a lot. But I see what you're saying even about downtown with the biking. I know they were doing Putney Road and I guess Westby, but Brattleboro doesn't have, I haven't seen bike lanes down in Meyer. I haven't seen too many bikers going uphill. But the proposal you're putting together is what for the infrastructure? The Prudence?
Yeah, what we're doing is we're doing the first step that if there were a master plan, the first thing you would do is document existing conditions. So we're working to document the existing, the conditions that exist now. You know, as a way to take a first step in this plan, but really for it to go very far, it needs to be a project of the town. It can't be this committee that creates a plan. Because, you know, we wouldn't have the ability, we wouldn't have the ability to really do a good job with the plan, but also we would never have the ability to implement it.
Yeah, Sue, what do you think?
I was just going to suggest that one of the things Tom has asked about doing is kind of creating a calendar of kind of recurring, whether it's grants or other things that we know come up. And so, you know, this could be a really good municipal planning grant project, and those applications are usually due at the end of September. They're funded at some point in December. And so it could be a project in 2022. If that was something the planning commission wanted to put forward. So I think I'll work on the calendar for the next meeting and you know, where where it goes from there, but just a suggested way to kind of wrap it up.
Yeah, let's all keep it in mind. And Stan, what do you have to say?
Yeah, that's pretty much what I was going to ask Prudence about if if your committee has looked into pursuing funding for your plan, or if if that's one way we could help.
Yeah, we haven't. We haven't looked at as funding and and I, I mean, for a while I wondered if we could do it, you know, do it almost without outside consultants, but I don't think that's realistic. So, yeah, if we if we could get, if if we can get the town committed to getting a grant for consulting help, that's probably a good, that would be a good next step.
So that would be something going through the Human Services Committee to get a grant, probably? No, okay.
No, that it would be the town would apply.
Yeah, it would be the department taking it forward, getting approval from the select board and applying.
Okay. Well, so we're going to be thinking about that and Sue's gonna come to us with the the calendar of grants and things. And maybe that will, we can see how we'll think more about it and learn more about the 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 project and see, see if it's a good fit for us. It happened. I think we should just adjourn here.
Can we do public comment first?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Another problem, the comment or the official public comment period. Or Kevin? If you want to say anything.
It's been fascinating to listen to all your ambitious projects. I really am amazed at everything that you're working on and thinking about doing. So I'm glad that I'm glad that I stayed silently on. I've been just thinking about all the different parts of the town and the constituencies that you touch. As someone who used to bike before I moved to Brattleboro, where the hills and the lack of biking paths just made it really seem dangerous. So so I wish you the best. I'm I'm going to stay tuned on several of these issues now.
Yeah, please do. Feel free to, you know, show up with other meetings and you can see us in action, you know, actually making decisions on on things instead of getting up to speed on all this context, which has been interesting anyway.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah, so thank you. So what should we say in closing here? Feel free, just new commissioners, but anyone, I think to just as long as we're not breaching open meeting meeting law to, you know, reach out and talk amongst yourselves, ask questions, brainstorm on things, see how you feel about agenda items and talk them through instead of, you know, maybe using the meeting so that way. I mean, I, you know, I I think we're all guilty of it of just, you know, thinking for the first time about a topic at the actual meeting, but we only have two hours and we have multiple agenda items. So let's uh, let's try to have some conclusions already reached when we get to the meeting. And yeah.
Yeah, feel feel free to reach out to me if you want to know more about a project that I touched on tonight. I'm happy to, you know, have a conversation and provide lots more background. And yeah.
Yep. Yeah, lots of good links in that PDF you put together. And
Yeah.
There's no shortage of no shortage of material to help get familiar.
I just like to get the email to that site that, I mean, like I said, that website is just phenomenal for what you guys did. Compared to what websites we have currently. I mean, that I just like to get the origins, not just that, but if I can have it sent to me, emailed to me, I like to look at it more, study it more.
The just, are you talking about the just city? Oh, the downtown design plan. Got it.
Yes. I was away for a while on surgery, so I didn't have time to back, you know, and healthier and stronger.
Yep.
And Tom, is there a way to contact you also?
There is a way, absolutely. You should see my email address on that, on the group, on the group thing. Yeah. There's also smoke signals and passenger pigeons phone call. I'm just showing up at my front door with a mask. But I think I should say on that high note that there being no other business, the meeting's adjourned.
Absolutely. Thank you all again. And I'm happy to be looking forward
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Bye bye.